Good evening. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to welcome Reverend Calvin Odner, I believe is this is spelling, and I apologize if I'm off with the Morning Star Chapel in Milton. So if you would please step up and lead us in our vacation, and we certainly appreciate you being here Reverend.
Relighted to be here. Please bow your heads for the prayer. Lord, we ask that you open our hearts tonight, that you open our understanding, so that we lead and govern by the principles that you have taught us. Remind us to be humble, for without you, we can do nothing. Amen.
Thank you very much for being here and leading us in our vacation. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, November 3rd, 2014, to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the November 3rd, 2014, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you're required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koots.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
Tonight, we are honored to have the Sons of the American Revolution lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome here tonight, and as always, a big thanks to the Sons of the American Revolution for being here with us and leading us in our pledge. All right, Sudi, if you wouldn't mind calling the next item meeting agenda.
Next item is approval of the meeting agenda, agenda item number 14-290.
Okay, one thing I, we do need to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition and personnel. I'd also like to suggest that we add that right after the first reading, first presentation items. Anything else, staff?
No, sir.
Counsel. Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of the executive session to discuss personnel and land acquisition before the public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion. Councilmember Hewitt, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please step forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and then we'll allow five minutes for each public comment. Do we have any general public comment?
We do not, sir.
Okay. And Sudi, if we can move on to the consent agenda, if you don't mind reading the consent agenda. Is that under general, or would that be?
That's, he has marked general comment, yes.
Okay.
And that would be Charles Lancelot.
Okay, please step forward.
Evening, Honorable Councilmembers, Mayor Lockwood. I'm here to discuss the transfer issue.
Excuse me, Mr. Lancelot, if you wouldn't mind, just for the record, state your name and address.
Oh, excuse me, yes, Charles Lancelot. Live at 13372 Providence Park Drive, which is right next door to Providence Park. And I've been there for 19 years, and I've seen a lot coming and going and a lot going on in that park. And that's why I'm here. I'm here in strong support of the city of Milton's desire to have the park transferred as it should be from the county to the city, and to be restored to its use as a nature park, which is as I know it and as I've known it for 19 years. I wrote a letter which I submitted to all of the council members here and to the mayor about, I guess, a week to 10 days ago, and I'd like to enter that letter into the record here at the meeting tonight. I've got several copies of it. And I just wanted to take just a very few minutes just to hit some of the high spots on that. I know there are two key issues here. One is the claim by certain Fulton County Commissioners that the park is unused surplus property. It most certainly is not unused, even though it's been closed, you didn't hear that, and it is most certainly not surplus property. It was very actively used by very many groups before it was closed. Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, scores of private citizens. It is and always has been, and still is, a wonderful nature, a recreational area. When the Evergrace buyers were looking, buying their homes in the Evergrace area right adjacent to the park, that was one of their questions. And they asked, and they ask me to this day, when that park is going to be reopened. It was, the fact that it was next to a nature park was a major factor in their buying decisions. I don't think it needs comment to say that the park has been anything but unused even during its closure. The fact that Fulton County has been as vigorous as they have in trying to enforce its closure kind of speaks to the point that it's not unused. The other key issue is, I know that the desire is to transfer the park to the highest bidder, and the highest bidder, we assume, would be a commercial or residential developer. Now, just a couple of points, this is in the letter that I sent to you folks. That park was built as a nature park, so I'm told, and I was told this 19 years ago and since, as a nature park with nature trails, because it wasn't possible to put the kind of structures on there that are in other parks, like Wills Park, the parks up by Beaufort Dam, and that's simply because of the poor percolation. It's a quarry, it was a quarry, as I'm sure you all remember, and it's very rocky topography. The fact is, now that's, as I mentioned in my letter to the council, that's hearsay. The fact is, and I was there, I saw this, that properties most nearest adjacent to the park itself, when they were being excavated to build the last Evergrace houses, had to be dynamited to get down through that rock. The park, 42 acres, I understand, of that 42 acres, those of you that have been down there, probably all of you have, a lot of that is the quarry itself, what's left of the quarry area, and it's characterized by rock outcroppings, steep embankments, and so forth. I can't say it can possibly be built in there. The, when Evergrace was built, it was built with three detention ponds, A, B, and C. And incidentally, in the letter that I submitted to the council, I erroneously referred to detention pond C. I meant detention pond B, and the letter which I'm entering into the record tonight refers to pond B. Detention pond B empties into a stream, the stream, by the way, was relocated as the Evergrace builders redid the topography. That stream empties into a small lake between myself and two neighbors called Copeland Lake. That lake filled up with mud and sediment during the building because it just, the mud just ran off during the construction, and had to be dredged. But even so, since that subdivision was built, and I'm pretty sure this is what happens with anything that's built in the park itself, silt and dirt and mud have continued to run off, and those, the streams downstream of the Providence Lake have continued to fill up with silt. And after very heavy rainfalls, the stream geography itself changes significantly. The banks have been filled up with sand and silt, and the upstream ends of Providence Lake, you can see in my aerial photographs, have been filling in with silt. The reason for that is, when Evergrace was built, and this is in the letter that I sent to the council, when Evergrace was built, the builders classified that property as grassy waterway. Grassy waterway runs off fast, and if the runoff is fast when you get there, you don't have, you don't have that much runoff to try to contain when you're looking at the developed land with asphalt and concrete and houses on there. So as a result, since they classified the land as grassy waterway, they were able to undersize the detention ponds. In fact, the Evergrace land before the development was identical to Providence Park today, which is heavy forested ground cover. In other words, Providence Park and the land prior to Evergrace is very actively retaining the groundwater. When the development was built, there went the retention. The reason that they had to undersize the detention ponds is, as I mentioned before, having to do with the heavy rock formations. They couldn't go down further than they had because they were already at the minimum depth required to be at the minimum distance from bedrock. So they couldn't go down, they couldn't go sideways because that would cut into their building potential. So all of this goes to say that you've got rocky topography, poor percolation properties, you won't be able to build proper detention ponds, and you'll have the same situation occurring that you have occurring now, except that you'll be directly running into Providence Lake directly. Now, I have not written yet to, I believe the man's name is Walter Recuck, the soil and water conservation supervisor for the district. Didn't want to do that until I had this conversation with the council, but I do think that environmentally, any attempt to develop that land residentially would be very, very harmful to the lake and to the surrounding environment. So for all these reasons, and for the fact that there is a rather large contingent of residents and citizens that want that park restored as it once was, that I'm strongly in support of your position, and I'll do anything that you gentlemen and ladies require of me now or going forward to bolster your position. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and Sudi, if you'll enter that letter into the record, I know we've gotten out an email. And just in general to the public, the city is very interested in keeping that as a park, so working with Fulton County on that. All right, Sudi, do we have any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay, let's move on to consent agenda.
First item this evening, approval of the September 22nd, 2014 regularly scheduled council meeting minutes, agenda item number 14-291. Next, approval of the September 29th, 2014 special call to council meeting minutes, agenda item number 14-292. Our third consent agenda item this evening is approval of the October 6th, 2014 regularly scheduled council meeting minutes, agenda item number 14-293. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the city of Milton and Triscapes Inc. for the Thompson Road Cedar Creek Stormwater Improvement Project, agenda item number 14-294. Next, approval of a construction services agreement between the city of Milton and Gulf Coast Sports LLC for the construction of two covered dugouts at Hopewell Middle School, agenda item number 14-295. Our final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a contract renewal between the city of Milton and AT&amp;T for broadband services, agenda item number 14-296.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Set.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move into reports and presentations. I'm honored, first to read a proclamation for Pancreatic Careness, Cancer Awareness Month. Before I read the proclamation, I just, I want to thank Ms. Patty Blaylock, who's here in our audience, a former Milton High School basketball player who is here tonight to support not only pancreatic cancer research, but also the memory and tremendous legacy of Milton High School Coach Mike Scott, which we honored last year, and her mother Betty Bowling Blaylock, and her uncle JT Bowling. So we're excited to have you here. I'm going to read this proclamation, and I'd like to ask Patty to come, step forward and present it, and she may want to say a few words too, so. This proclamation, Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, in 2014, an estimated 46,420 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 39,590 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, it's the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6 percent. And whereas, when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is late stage, and 73 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas, approximately 1,040 deaths will occur in Georgia in 2014. Whereas, the Cancer Research Act was signed into law in 2012, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop scientific frameworks for strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategy, direction, and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in the city of Milton and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness, and education relating to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. And whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in the city of Milton support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease, and are committed to nothing less than a cure. And whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of the city of Milton are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton, Georgia hereby dedicate and proclaim November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Milton, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. This is given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia on the third day of November 2014. And if Patty, you wouldn't mind stepping forward? I'll let you speak for a minute, then I'll get the council to step forward, and then I'll, I think you've been here, and you have a few words you want to say. All right. And then just a few minutes of counsel.
I just want to thank Mayor Lockwood and the city council members for the proclamation naming November Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. I'm standing here today with my friends and family because of several heroes in our lives, one being the tremendous legacy of Milton High School Coach Mike Scott, who passed away two years after being diagnosed. My mother, Betty Jean Bowling Blaylock, and my uncle JT Bowling, and many others who have passed or are battling pancreatic cancer. My biggest hero is my mother. Lost her battle not only but 22 days after her diagnosis. Even though she didn't feel well for three to five years, she went to various doctors, and no one could detect or link the symptoms to pancreatic cancer. I will never forget the day, the doctor, where we traveled to the Mayo Clinic in Jacksonville, Florida for a hope, confirmed our biggest, our family's biggest nightmare, and told my mother she did have pancreatic cancer. Go home, enjoy your last Christmas. With tears in our eyes, we both knew what would be the next journey. As I pushed her wheelchair down the halls and into the hotel room of the Mayo Clinic, she looked at me with her big brown eyes. I will never understand or accept the C-word. Those words I still hear today, I too shall say, nor will I understand or accept the C-word. In 2012, and in 2010, the first year of my mother's death, remember, 22 days later, I Googled and found the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network, the organization was having a walk in honor and memory of those of pancreatic cancer. I signed up for the walk with pneumonia as a spurple stride 5K walk at Primanor Mall. It was uplifting and emotional at the same time. It was that day I decided to become a part of the Pancreatic Action Network. As you heard from Mayor Lockwood, the important part of pancreatic cancer action research does help patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to this disease, and their commitment to nothing less than a cure. Every year, the Pancreatic Action Network hosts events around the area. The most recent one coming up is on November 15th. Come join my team, Strolling for Bowling, in honor, Mike, my mom, dad, my mom, my family, and everyone else, because it could be me, the next one, the victim of it. Unknown, it could have been my grandmother, but back in 1946, no one may have known what her causes were, but she had the same symptoms as my mom and dad recall. So come join our journey. Walk with us, wear purple, and join Strolling for Bowling. If you can't, we're welcome donations to help find a cure for pancreatic cancer. Another recognition that we're outstanding, looking forward to, is World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day, which is November 13th, and the purpose is to wear purple and speak about it. Let people know what is causing the fourth leading cause of deaths. I'm asking each of you and the community to come support and raise more awareness towards pancreatic cancer. Again, thank you, and thank you for your support of pancreatic cancer.
Okay, next, moving on to our next item. Sudi, if you'll please sound the next, next item, we've got another proclamation here, Veterans Day.
Our next item is proclamation recognizing Veterans Day 2014. This is being presented by Councilmember Bill Luss.
Thank you. This is proclamation for Veterans Day 2014. Whereas, it has long been our custom to commemorate November 11th, the anniversary of the ending of World War I, by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle, and by rededicating ourselves to the cause of peace. And whereas, in the intervening years, the United States has been involved in several other great military conflicts, which have added millions of veterans, living and dead, to the honor rolls of this nation. And whereas, the Congress passed a concurrent resolution on June 4th, 1926, calling for the observance of November 11th with appropriate ceremonies, and later provided in an act approved May 13th, 1938, that the 11th of November should be a legal holiday and should be known as Armistice Day. And whereas, in order to expand the significance of that commemoration, in order that a grateful nation might pay appropriate homage to the veterans of all its wars who have contributed so much to the preservation of this nation, the Congress, by an act approved June 1st, 1954, changed the name of the holiday to Veterans Day. Now therefore, we, and the mayor and city council of the city of Milton, hereby call upon all of our citizens to observe Tuesday, November 11th, 2014, as Veterans Day. On that day, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who fought so valiantly on the seas, in the air, and on foreign shores to preserve our heritage of freedom, and let us consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace, so that their efforts shall not have been in vain. Given under his hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on this third day of November 2014. Like the SAR chapter, front and center plates, and come down, everybody.
Thank you all for coming. I always appreciate it. I'm always glad to see y'all.
Good seeing you again.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you guys coming, always.
Good to see you, too.
Thank you for joining us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Sudi, if you don't mind reading the first presentation items.
Our first item under first presentation is RZ 1414, Consideration of an Ordinance to Amend Section 64, 1596, Event, Special Indoor/Outdoor of the City of Milton, Georgia, Code of Ordinances, to include provisions of Chapter 34, Article 3, Division 2, to streamline the existing regulation of special events and to limit sales from vehicles at special events, to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Agenda item number 14297. Our second and final first presentation item is Consideration of an Ordinance to Amend Chapter 46, Solid Waste, Article 2, Littering, Section 46-24, to require construction site operators to properly dispose of building materials and waste at a construction site that may cause adverse impacts to water quality. This is agenda item number 14298.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the first presentation as read by staff.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Coons, second by Councilmember Thurman. Will the first presentation be read? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Our next item is added by motion and vote, a change to the agenda to go into executive session to discuss land acquisition and personnel. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss land acquisition and personnel.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We'll feedback in... Can you manage to continue on with our meeting?
Up towards the front.
Yeah, executive conference room, yeah.
Reconvene.
Reconvene.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any pose? Okay, that's unanimous. All right, Suti, if you will call the next item, which would be our unfinished business.
Consideration of a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of transferable development rights in certain city-owned property, authorizing the imposition of a conservation easement, and/or public access easement on said city property, and for other purposes. This is Agenda Item Number 14281. It was deferred at the October 6th meeting to October 20th, and deferred at the October 20th meeting to this evening. I do have one public comment. Do you want to hear that first, or?
Yeah, I'm fine with public comment first on this item. If you're all right, Kathy, you can go.
And that would be Ms. Laura Renshaw.
Laura Renshaw, I live at 1060 Birmingham Road, Milton. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't think anybody up here is going to be surprised that I'm not for this transaction. I believe much of the controversy about the transaction lies in the lack of understanding by all of us, community staff and council. I don't profess to be an expert on land conservation, but I have taken untold hours to try to understand it by reading and speaking to experts. So to clarify, there are something that I think we need, way to think about this, we've got two parts to TDRs. The first one that focuses on the developer, the number of TDR units, and the financial viability for that developer. This area also includes the density bonus ratio for the crab apple and deer field sending areas, or receiving areas, the demand for TDRs by developers, and the number of TDR units that a landowner has on his property available for the transaction. This side of the TDR program appears to be understood fairly well by most of the stakeholders, including the Community Development Department and the City Attorney. This makes sense because the staff's expertise is development, and it's obvious they are quite good at that. The other side, the other piece of the TDR transaction involves the landowner conservation process. And even if the TDR units are identified and agreed upon, price is obtained, there's a fairly complicated, lengthy, and costly process that has to be worked through just to put an easement on a property. If the property has a mortgage, the bank has to sign off on the placement of the easement on the property. To accomplish this, there has to be a survey done showing the easement, and then a very specialized appraisal must be done to show the value before and after the easement. This appraisal has to be done by a certified appraiser that has specialized knowledge and experience with conservation transactions. In addition, an entity that is usually a third party in the form of a land trust has to agree to accept the easement for supervision. So, as far as I know, many of these important details on the conservation part of the transaction are unknown at this time. Aside from my previous mentioned opposition to this transaction because of, because conservation of city-owned parkland is not necessary nor appropriate for this land preservation tool, my biggest concern is what we don't know. As I've mentioned before, I've not found any examples of a city using city-owned land for TDR transactions. The consequences of this unusual use of the program are completely unknown. In fact, there are so many details of this specific TDR transaction that are unknown, I don't know how anyone could vote on it. Just as in any sale of a public land, there are specific details that need to be documented and made public, such as what specific acreage on Bell Memorial Platte is being used for the easement. Is it part of the expansion, or was it prior owned? This is important because the ordinance specifies only city land purchased after the program went into effect can be used for TDR purposes. Another question is what kind of appraisal was obtained? I don't know the results of the appraisal, and I don't know what kind of appraisal was done. I know that there was something done related to appraising TDR value, but we have to understand that TDR value is not necessarily conservation easement value. So, so the problem with, so, we need to determine, what's the determined value of the TDR by unit? What is that appraisal? And then what is the decrease in value on the parkland due to the easement placed on it? So while in theory, market value for TDR should be close to the loss of value on conservation, on property due to a conservation easement, we don't know this is true unless the conservation easement appraisal has been done with the value of the property before and after the easement. I'm not aware if this has been done. The other question is who is going to hold the easement and supervise its use? To my knowledge, no third party has been contacted to hold the easement, and it's widely accepted to be a conflict of interest for the city to hold an easement on its own land. If the sale goes through at a much lower, in addition, if the sale goes through at a much lower price than private landowners want their TDRs, this will discourage landowners from participating in this arduous process to apply for acceptance to the program, and later putting an easement on their property. So at this point, I'm asking, why is this transaction being putting, put through when so many aspects of the process remain unknown? There are many aspects of this program we don't understand. At this point, I see that there's no benefit to the community from this transaction. I don't see how it facilitates the TDR program, other than getting a developer his units, and the city some recompense. That doesn't mean that there isn't, there isn't a value to do this, to do this transaction for the community, but I'm not seeing it right now, and we really don't have enough information to make this determination. So I think we really need to take the time to perform thorough due diligence before this decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment, Suti?
That's all, sir.
Okay. Kathy, if you want to.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to start the presentation tonight and then turn it over to Kathy.
Okay.
Before you tonight, is this resolution again, this is the third time it's been here, this is the one that offers potentially for sale, the transferable development rights of certain city-owned property, being that at Bell Memorial Park. We've deferred this item for a couple of weeks, two times. I can tell you that since the last time it was deferred, a couple of weeks ago, I can tell you that since the last time it was deferred, a couple of weeks ago, there have been no new private landowners that have come forward with development rights that have been able to be transferred or offered for sale, for an assortment of reasons. I can tell you that if, in fact, you move forward or want to move forward with this authorization tonight, in essence, what this does is directs us to the public sale. This doesn't transfer development rights tonight, it doesn't approve any conservation easement, it doesn't do anything that directs us to go to that market. As you know, the appraisal that we've received on this is more of a receiving site appraisal, an academic valuation, as opposed to a, an appraisal that values some type of conservation dollars, because that was what was available to us, that we could rely upon with some reasonable certainty, that the public was confident it was getting its value. I can tell you that we do not believe that the city is the right agency to hold conservation easement. We've explored a land bank option in the last couple of weeks, as the council directed, and I don't believe that there's any legal ability for that to exist for this purpose either. I can tell you that we have very strong interest from two different land trusts. One has agreed to hold the easement at Bell Memorial Park, and the other conceptually believes that they'd be willing to hold the easement. They certainly would want to visit the property. But we have two very vital, or very viable is a better word, very viable opportunities to work with a land trust to hold that easement if we need it, and also recognize that any revenues that the council might generate as a product of this conservation initiative could be used to preserve other land in fee elsewhere in Milton. So, we've had all those discussions, there's been nothing new that's transpired. The good news tonight is that I believe that we have honed in on who could hold the easement, and it won't be us, and it won't be a land bank, but it ultimately would be one of two land trusts. Shy away a little bit tonight from saying who they are, because we want to make sure that we remain with some competitiveness there, as far as endowment and dollars that would be paid as a part of the transaction. But I can tell you tonight that that, it's more than just one trust that has interest, we've actually got two for this particular parcel. I'm happy to answer any questions, I'm happy to turn it over to Kathy and Ken real quick to see if I missed anything, and I.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate, Mr. Mayor, that this vote tonight, should you vote in favor, is to allow us to go out to bid, based on the bidding procedure of the city. Any vote to actually sell the TDRs, it would come back to you for that.
Okay. Is there any questions from council to universe staff? Just to clarify, Kathy and Chris, that also, as we have deferred this several times, there's a couple of issues which we've addressed, one being potential land trust that could hold this if it were to happen, and also, there's a couple of proposals and thoughts with other private owners that might be interested, but after vetting those out, those have, at this point, have fallen through correctly.
That's correct.
That's right.
So, we did, that was part of the reason we had deferred this down for actually last month, so. Any questions, or come to anybody?
If, Mr. Mayor, if I could offer, and I'm not suggesting that the council will support this resolution, but if, in fact, there's a motion that's made tonight to offer support for this resolution, in the third whereas clause, if you take a look at it, based upon a discussion that, based upon prior discussions with the council, I believe it would make sense after the listing where it says 15155 Hopewell Road, 3.819 acres, we would then add comma, or other Milton Park property. And I think that you would understand what that, what the purpose of potentially adding that would be to this resolution.
Okay. And. For other Milton Park property, is that what you said?
Why would we restrict it just to park property?
In this particular case, we're, never mind.
I guess my only thought there is that for the purpose of this resolution, it specifically calls out Bell Memorial Park.
Right.
And, you know, to the extent that we have other, we have other park property that would be eligible, or acquire other park property that would be eligible, by adding that simple clause, we wouldn't alleviate an opportunity that may or may not exist in the next couple of months.
The one thing I would like to see is if there was, I worry about existing park property that we already have, but if we include an acquisition of park property as part of our discussion with a TDR option for what we acquire, I think that would make the most sense in the spirit of what we were trying to do, trying to throw TDRs on parkland that we have owned for years may not be in that spirit. And if there's a way we can, a motion that we can do that and that, or is there phrasing that we might be able to include to have it in that transaction?
Yeah, that's already been addressed, because property that was owned prior to the approval of the TDR.
Has already gotten.
Does not qualify.
Okay. And I just want to make comment, too. In general, to, based on public comment and our citizens with concerns, we, we have explored several options, and I think, you know, we have made some, some changes, and, you know, everybody's been heard, and we are, are trying to go in the right, you know, we feel is the right direction.
I'll let Joe go first, then I'll go.
Oh, I'm going to make a resolution.
Oh, well, then, then I'll go.
Or make a motion, right?
I'll go before you. I guess, going back to the, I guess I still have the same feeling as before, I'm past the legality, yes, we can do it, but back to really looking at green space preservation and land conservation, I don't really see how this transaction really translates into accomplishing that, other than we could get some dollars that we may be able to buy some green space. That's, that's my concern with this, this specific transaction.
One quick legal question before he makes his motion. Is there a way, as part of this motion, to add to it that any funds acquired, net funds acquired in the sale of the TDRs be set aside for other conservation purposes?
We wouldn't do it, right, we wouldn't do it now, but we'd do it when we come back to you.
When we come back to them to actually sell, okay.
That's what I was getting at.
Joe?
Yeah, so, just before I make my motion, I just want to make sure I understand, this isn't a transaction, this isn't a sale, this isn't anything other than the authorization for the city to pursue, pursue the idea that the Bell Memorial Park property could be used as part of a TDR transaction, but there's a whole bunch of stuff that we have to do before we can make that determination.
We will use this resolution as the authorization to go out and solicit bids for that very transaction.
Right, right. So. Bids that we could turn down and refuse. We could be here a year from now, no further down the road.
That's correct.
Yeah.
If we don't like what the bids are that we might receive.
That's correct as well.
Okay, so.
Okay, Rick.
Because I guess where I, where I get caught up in, as it says executive summary, this is a request to authorize the sale for transfer of development right credits to assist an assisted living developer with his density requirements. I read that as a specific transaction that we're talking about.
Yeah, that was poor word choice, because I read the resolution, and that's, I didn't get that out of that.
We would, we would have to make, you know, very clear as part of the bid process that even a successful bidder is still subject to the final ratification by the council.
Is that, you know, that was a nuance here, because I just leaned over to ask Ken, that potentially is a nuance, because when we go to bid and we put a reserve price in there, there's some thought that if somebody matches, meets the reserve price, that you're committing to doing the transaction, but I think I've heard, so I want to highlight it, I think I've heard from the council that regardless of that, that's, just simply meeting the reserve of the public bid doesn't necessarily commit the council to a thing.
Right. The council wants to have this, even if they meet the reserve, back in front of you, and then you be presented with that and decide yes or no at that point.
So, that terminology is included in the bid solicitation?
Yeah, I don't know, is that, so we don't have, we don't have to change anything in terms of the wording of what's in the resolution itself to cover that?
You provided.
You just want us to ratify. You want a bit of ratifying, regular force to make that.
Yeah, I didn't see any council member object to that, so I'll take that as correction.
All right. Then, Mayor, I move to approve a resolution authorizing the offering for sale transfer of preferable development rights in certain city-owned properties, authorizing the imposition of a conservation easement and/or public access easement on said city property and for other purposes. Agenda item number 14-281, with the provision that in the third whereas clause, after the bracketed 3.819 acres in line three of that paragraph, we insert the wording, or other Milton Park property, and then continue on with collectively the Bell Memorial Park property phrase.
I'll second it.
Are we step clear on that?
Mr. Mayor, we are, and I just.
Any comments on that?
If we're in discussion right now, I just want to point to, some of the city attorney just pointed out to me, and apparently he had a bit of, I don't know what you call it, foresight when he wrote in section three here.
Lucidity was not the words you were going to use.
You can see that if you question whether or not that direction needed to be in writing, it says here that final documentation transferring, the development rights shall be submitted to the council for approval and ratification, so it's, your, your direction that we captured is also written.
Okay. Ken, do you have something to say?
No, I was seconding it.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Longoria has read into the record, and a second by Councilmember Thurman. Now we'll open up for any discussion. Matt?
Yeah, I've done a lot of thought on this as well, and the concern is whether the city should be involved in being, acquiring land and using TDRs. I absolutely agree with that, although that hasn't been the precedent in other states. I have no fear of our doing that here, I think that that's going to be a good thing, especially if we were looking at the city as when we were looking at the TDR program as a bank, that allows us to acquire that land. And, you know, from a park perspective, I think new acquisitions should be considered with that, because as much as there is a financial transaction, the public should benefit from this program as well, those in subdivisions who may not have land to buy, but they are still taxpayers for the city of Milton, need to participate in that, so I think we have to, as a city, be a participant in our own program, but we shouldn't exclude other property owners from being a part of it as well. So, you know, whether or not the parks should be involved in this, I think that, that we have to do that. I don't think that we should use it for land conservation, you know, as far as existing land, because that kind of defeats the purpose, but in acquiring, I can understand that it makes sense to me. So, but I don't want to do it unless we, you know, as we talked about, have some kind of a fund, according to Karen Thurman's idea, to use the money to buy additional land, I think this makes more sense in the spirit of what it is we're trying to do. So, going out to bid, I think it's a good vote, I support it.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If you, okay, got one, one opposition, Councilmember Memorial, and the rest in favor. All right, we could move on to new business, Suti.
Next item is consideration of a resolution amending Milton Groves Green bylaws. This is Agenda Item Number 14-299. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and council, before you tonight is a resolution that is requesting that we amend the Milton Groves Green bylaws. If you recall, early on in its initial formation, we had a couple of committees that formed by establishing resolutions that created their structure and how they would function. Milton Groves Green was one of them, MDAC was a different one. Milton Groves Green came and asked if they could put together a subcommittee to look at their bylaws, to see if there were avenues for modification. I can tell you, I think that this might be version 18 or 19, so I can tell you that it got a very thorough, very thorough look. Essentially, the high levels of what it does is it restructures their, their board and takes it from 13 members down to seven. Absolutely can support any organization that can reduce that cumbersomeness, because it will become probably more efficient. They've created positions that they believe make sense, and candidly, this is how they have asked to be governed, and it's one of those things where I might look at it and say, to some degree, I think it might be a bit restrictive, and the attorney, so the attorney might look at it and say, you know, Chris, to some degree, that it might be restrictive, and I offered those as suggestions in their review process, and just said, be sure that when you govern yourself to a standard, that you're governing yourself to a standard you want to adhere to, even if the law doesn't require it, because as soon as you write it on paper, you have to do it. They assured me that this document matched the way that they wanted to operate, and that they had been operating, and as such, it's hard to take a recommendation from the subcommittee and the approval of the city attorney and suggest that it needs to be changed, so. Whereas I might bring you a different document that's not quite as restrictive tonight, I certainly am happy supporting what their committee has brought forward and asked that the council supported. You will see their members from time to time every year, as a part of these new bylaws, as well as it generally vests in the council the ultimate authority to override anything that really is done. I made sure that that provision was at least in there, that the name couldn't change, the format couldn't change, and the members couldn't change without the council having a final say. I'm happy to take any questions, if you have any specifically for the document.
Mr. Mayor, just a real quick point to add to what the city manager just said, this resolution in front of you is doing two things, not only is it ratifying their bylaws, but it is also simultaneously amending the creation resolution, because the bylaws as amended are different than the creation resolution that you originally adopted some years ago, and as you know, bylaws can't be different than the resolution that created you in the first place. So what you're doing is ratifying their bylaws and simultaneously changing that initial creation resolution. Therefore, they will be consistent after you act, and if you do in fact act to approve this evening.
One final thing, is a, is a product of timing, the reason this is before you in December is because they want to hold the elections that these bylaws call for in December, and I said it's difficult to hold an election to positions that don't exist, so.
Right.
That's why you see this a bit out of sequence, and why it's coming singularly, as opposed to with something in December, but you'll see Milton Groves Green back, back in front of you in December. And it is, they requested to come tonight, and I said, I don't think you need to, I think you can, you know, spend a night at home, I think the bylaws are fairly straightforward, it's something I can get accomplished. It's not because they didn't offer, but you'll see them next month in December, when they come forward with their slate of officers for the following, for the following year.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept Agenda Item, or approve Agenda Item Number 14-299, consideration of resolution amending Milton Groves Green bylaws. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Memorial, second by Councilmember Hewitt. Any discussion? Any none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The passage unanimously. All right, Suti, if you mind calling the next item?
Our next item is consideration of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and VC3 Inc. for cloud-based IT services. Agenda Item Number 14-300, Mr. David Frisell.
Got a chance to show off my tie. I don't wear it that often.
Very nice.
Lead with that statement.
All right, well.
He's a geek.
Yep. Well, I'd like to just take everyone back, just kind of give you a little bit of history of what we're, we're working with here, is, this is something that's been in progress for about a year now. About a year ago, Councilmember Longoria and city manager had a discussion on the potential advantages of moving our, our IT infrastructure to the cloud, and so we had an internal discussion about it, we did some research and some internal discussions, we agreed eventually that this was something we wanted to pursue. So we came up with some criteria that we'd want to use for, you know, the qualifications, the services that we'd want to get, what would work for Milton, and here's just a brief list. We wanted to have a resilient infrastructure. We have a, right now, we do have a stable infrastructure, we have it backed up off-site. If anything were ever happened in City Hall, it would require us to buy new hardware, get everything in place, and to get it back up running, and that could take time. By moving to the cloud, we are then in a virtual setup, a virtual network, where we're not constrained by what happens to the hardware at City Hall. It gives us a lot more resiliency, and ensures the city keeps its critical services running. Another criteria we're looking for is access from anywhere. If you remember last year in January, we had the snowstorm that kept a lot of people home for a couple of days. So this factored into, what we're looking for is that we want to be able to have our people, whether they're stuck at home for a snowstorm, or if they're homesick, you know, they'll still be able to get to work and do what they need to do. know, they'll still be able to get to work and do what they need to do, and do exactly what they do at work from home. So that was one of the criteria we had. Another thing we want is increased support, where we have, you know, 24/7 monitoring, we have filtering, firewall, spam coverage, all those things that we currently have in a, in a basic format. Now we would have in an expanded format in the clouds. We want to do that. Also, we'd want to have not just increased bench strength, but bench diversity, where there, there are so many different disciplines within IT itself, that you want to have people who are experts in each one of those fields, and we believe this provides for that. There are questions of security that have come up for the cloud over the last decade or so, since its infancy, and we can discuss that. Actually, Ryan Wilson and Catherine Anderson have joined us tonight. They are with VC3. If you have any questions for them, as far as, from a technical standpoint, they'd love to answer anything you've got. Another criteria we have is that we're looking for a cost-effective solution. There are, there are different ways you can go about providing a cloud solution. We wanted the right one at the right price that gave us the efficiencies that we're looking for. And finally, the solution we were looking for would not just provide for our services now, but also keep us on the competitive edge for the future as well. And, you know, especially in light that we'll be moving to New City Hall in a couple of years, we want to be ready to hit the ground running there, not just in the cloud, but also ready for the future as well. So, here are some of the services that we were looking for. We went out and we, we spoke to a number of vendors, we visited different cities, talked to them about what worked, what didn't work for them, and so here's what we came up with as far as services. We need a virtual environment for our applications, for our servers, and for users to have a virtual desktop that they can access from anywhere. We would need software support for our third-party applications. We have a number of, we have InCode, we have OSI, we have a number of third-party applications that we need to have support for as well. And for someone to act as a go-between, between us and the vendor, if there is any escalated issues that they need to handle. I did mention 24-by-7 monitoring and phone support for a help desk number, so we can have people, you know, who, if, if I'm not available, they can actually call, and actually the first line of support would be to call the cloud services company to get help with their virtual desktop, or any one of the applications that they have installed on the servers, and so on. So, in, in short, what we need is a help desk that supports our city, not just the end-users, but also me on the backend with, with our growing technology needs. And again, we wanted to partner with someone who could support our changing needs in the future. I'd like to see something like SharePoint being implemented in the next few years. You know, they, they also offer different services with VoIP, voice-over-IP phones, which we could take advantage of in the future as well, as the need arises. So, after we discussed all these things with different vendors, both locally and in different states, we, we do believe that VC3 is the best candidate for this job. They've got 20 years' focus on small and medium-sized governments, which was important to us. We want to make sure we have someone who knows how government works. They have the most comprehensive service offering that meets all the criteria we set out to find. There were other vendors who came up and said, we can do this, we can partner with someone else to do that part, but bottom line, either they just didn't have experience with government, or they couldn't provide all the criteria that we were looking for. So, and, and again, we wanted someone who gave us, who had room to grow and expand with us. So, that's pretty much how it's been. It's, it's taken a year to get there. We're confident that this is the right solution, and we're looking for approval. I can answer any questions you have.
Certainly. Joe, you want to sing out a geek question or something?
Actually, I went through the contract, and I thought that it covered all the things that, that you mentioned, David, and I thought it was really, it was appropriate. The only issue I had with it, I thought the professional service rates were a little high for the current climate, and I could probably have lived with the fact they were a little high, but when they put the zinger in, that they charged for their travel time on top of that, I sort of got a little upset. So, but, I mean, I'm not going to make that an issue, and I think that this is...
If, if I could say, the, there is actually a certain amount of travel time built into the contract. 16 hours a month. That's correct.
Yes, that's correct. You've got to put in two visits per week, and I will say, we're in the open picture of these, there can be somebody onsite almost every day around 12:00. So, after that, you do this.
So there is a certain amount built in. We don't expect to have a permanent onsite technician at this point, so...
Hey, David, I, I think all of this is the right thing to do, and I'm real excited. I think you guys are going to really enjoy the fact that you won't be tethered to, you know, machines that are sitting at your desks and, and things like that, and you won't be the guy that has to worry about what happens when our, you know, exchange server crashes and stuff like that, so.
Karen?
Just one quick question. When would implementation start, and when will it actually be, will it be fully loading in the cloud?
As soon as we have a signed and a counter-signed contract, we'll go into the implementation phase immediately. There will be a number of months, I think it was four or five months. If you want to come up here and speak to that. As, as we discussed, it, we would have a complete go-live by around February, but there would be interim support in the meantime.
Sure. So it takes approximately, anywhere from about three to four months to get you completely migrated into the cloud. So during that time, we're building out the infrastructure in the backend, putting all the servers together. The, really, the, the longest time is the pilot testing for the users. We want that process to be as short and condensed, or as long as the end-users need. They're going to test every single application. There's going to be a person for each department that is going to sign off for that department that says, yes, these, all of our applications work in the cloud. So if that person take, needs 60 days to do that, or if they need 20 days, we're okay with either one, but that's really the majority of the time, is the actual pilot testing.
While you're there, can you have Catherine come up as well? And we'll just make a quick introduction of who you are, what you do for VC3, and what the highest support department, if you don't mind, to the council.
Sure. Hi, Mayor and Councilmen. I'm Catherine, and I, I represent the Georgia, VC3 Georgia area, and we've been around for 20 years, and what are some other things that... Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. My name's Ryan Wilson. I'm the director of regional offices. I'm also the VCIO for the Georgia area. VC3, as David mentioned earlier, been in business for about 20 years. We have offices in Raleigh, North Carolina, Decatur, Georgia, and then our corporate office is located in Columbia, South Carolina. In addition, we just opened an office in Alabama, so we're real excited about that. We have a little under 100 employees, so sitting at about 95 employees. Out of those employees, probably 80% of them are engineers, so that's kind of the bench depth that David was mentioning earlier. So, I mean, really, we're not heavy on the management side. Catherine and I are cost. Everybody else is an engineer and doing work, so.
David, looking at contract, Article 3, determine the contract. It's renewable, automatically renewable, at the end of the year, each year.
Right.
Are we not, so we're not specifying any, any hard completion date or term?
There is a 60-month term, renewable annually.
Oh, it is. I didn't read that in there, I'm sorry. What about the, on the renewable, on the renewing date, what's, how do we handle these unit prices that they have within the contract? Are they negotiable at the end of the, the annual term?
On the annual fee, I believe, and you guys might answer that better than I could, but I understand that there's probably an annual adjustment for, like, a cost of living?
Sure. So we usually follow the CPI index for that, but I think you're asking as far as the individual units on the, on the contract.
Right. Do you have a schedule, you have a schedule of unit prices in here?
Correct. So those go with, I mean, they fluctuate with the number of users, end-users you have for each one, so your accounts that you have in each single one for those. So if you have an additional seat that you need to add, then you can add that additional seat if you need to, if, for example, if you have an additional email address that you need added, you add that in. If you need to take away from that, you remove those, so those adjust as they, as you need them to. Does that answer your question?
Okay, so there's no, no adjustment over and above these unit costs that you have in here?
The CPI, that was what I was, so either the CPI or 3% per year on the contract. That's the only adjustment.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else?
Councilmember Lusk, just to further emphasize your point, though, based upon the way Georgia law is set up, with even on multi-year agreements, the city having the right to terminate upon 30 days' notice at the end of each year, it sort of builds in a de facto opportunity for further negotiation if it's needed, which is nice.
Well, of course, Joel Longoria could address this too, but with the ever-advancing refinements in technology like this, I think there are greater efficiencies to be had down the road that might offset any possible increases, including the CPI.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I would also say that companies such as this, and I'm not familiar with VC3 particularly, but their job is to be looking down the road at how they can get more service for less complexity, less cost, less everything else. And so, if we've chosen a good partner, they're going to be the ones that are doing that work for us, and they'll make us aware of those opportunities on the annual renewal date, and if they're not, then we'll wind up finding somebody that can, so.
And to the council member's point, obviously, we did some verification of, of reference checking in coming to this conclusion. One of the closest cities, one of the closest city managers that I have the utmost respect for, in the city of Decatur, it was a prime example of VC3 in actions. We were able to touch it and feel it and break it, and try to make it not work, and all that good, good stuff. If Peggy and Andrea are satisfied, I think we're going to be very happy.
All right. Joe? Open up for motions.
Oh, I'll do that. Mayor, I move that we approve a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and VC3 Incorporated for Cloud-Based IT Services, agenda item number 14-300.
Second motion. Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Longoria, seconded by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's you now. Thank you for being here, sorry for the long wait.
No, no problem.
Thanks for answering questions and being here. Thanks, David. Appreciate everything.
You take the tie off.
You take the tie off. Get back to work.
You start wearing a bow tie when you're in this place.
Hey, yeah, exactly. Couldn't be worse.
Use your back, man.
All right, Sudi, if you want to call next item?
Next item is consideration of a sole-source professional services agreement between the city of Milton, Georgia, and Laurel A. Florio for land conservation consulting services. Agenda item number 14-301, Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a contract, excuse me, I've done too much talking tonight, a contract for your consideration that would extend and move us beyond the conservation plan phase in our conservation initiative to landowner outreach with the, with the intent of actually having some conservation land transactions occur. That's kind of a high level that I can summarize in what this contract would do. I can tell you that I, my direction to the city attorney in preparing this contract was one that certainly wants to have the ability that if things are moving, moving along, and we don't need to, you know, put the brakes on, if all of a sudden we have more conservation transactions that we know what to do with come off the shelf, this contract could exist until December the 31st of 2015, but that's contingent upon the council adding funding to it to allow it to continue, so. You know, we came before the council at one point and said, let's look, look at this contract, and we're back before the council again to say, I think we've made progress towards the scope of work in the first contract. I think we can continue to make progress. I won't unless you want to be bored with the details. I won't go into all of the details of where we are in that conservation initiative, because it's a published agenda item for your work session one week from tonight. So you're going to get an up-to-the-minute play-by-play with Laurel, and a conversation with her as to the different landowners that she's been talking to, how many potential conservation projects we have in the pipeline, where we think they are in the pipeline, what incentives we think the council might need to approve to be able to cause them to actually go from a concept to, to a real, real deal. So you're going to hear all that a week from now, but I can tell you that my recommendation tonight to you is that there is value in continuing to proceed. I also recognize that at some point, the council's going to say, we want to see some, we want to see some action, we want to see some deliverable, and I'm right there with you. I can tell you that we met the scope of work for the first contract. The game is changing with the adoption of this contract. It's less planning and more, more outreach and more action, we're bringing conservation transactions to close. So that's what it's intended for. The first funding that is approved with this, that you all approved in the budget, but is certainly amendable, is $30,000. If you feel more comfortable, and I've had conversations with a couple of council members, if you feel more comfortable with a status check-in before that, to say, we'd like an update, that $15,000 spent, and where we are to be able to react to that, I can certainly, you know, I'm, I'm happy to bring this back to you at any point, whether it's in work session or because it's bound by contract. So, I'd be happy to take questions on specifically what it is. It's a lot of contractual words around that concept.
Bill?
Actually, this is a $40,000 contract, I see. There's an option to increase it through change order by $10,000.
Okay, fair, fair enough.
That is correct.
That's in most of our contracts.
How do...
Although that, to follow up on that, that would be contingent upon council appropriating the funding, because there's been funding for that at this point.
Right, but it has the potential with...
That's right.
...being $40,000. See, on the opening parts of the contract here, there are six different tasks to be addressed here. Are they stated in the, the priority that we're looking for, number one? And what metrics are we using to evaluate performance or completion on those different tasks?
That's a great question, and it's a hard, it, it's, it's a hard question when you have a contract like this, because we're kind of trying to define what we think is the right direction, which is to now move from conservation planning into conservation delivery in the form of conservation transactions. It's a difficult thing to find a place of agreement with any consultant on that, because the consultant can do everything in the world correct, and if you put a matrix on there that says a certain number of acres conserved, or a certain number of land, land transactions done, you're putting upon somebody a, a requirement or a restriction that they don't single-handedly control the outcome. You know, one of those happened last week, as a matter of fact, when we were having a discussion with the landowner in a conservation matter on Thompson Road, and that the landowner chose a different direction and chose to sell to a developer as opposed to approaching a conservation thing, or conservation-type solution. Was that a dollars and cents decision? Maybe. Did that mean that we didn't, or that when Laurel was out there and having those conversations, that she didn't perform correctly? That's a hard thing to determine, because somebody might evaluate their conservation options and say, that's just not the right choice for me at this point with my land. So I don't know that I've answered your question well, but as far as putting a, putting a matrix to it has been difficult. We wanted to capture that what we believe is the right direction, is that we move this from conservation planning to conservation projects.
Okay, going, going along with that same question, with the, the six tasks that are enumerated here, at least I couldn't find a, an hourly rate in the contract.
The hourly rate continues to be $150 per hour, which I believe is what the predecessor agreement was as well.
Okay, I guess I missed that. But given that, I'm, I'm not sure how you evaluate in, in invoice, and you, you talk in here on how all of the invoices are cost to be expensed... of the invoices are costs to be expended or to be incurred are to be approved beforehand. So, you're saying if she's working on task number one, working with staff, how do you, how do you approve her approach or her game plan? Is she going to give you the number of hours required to perform a certain task?
You know, this is one of those things that the way we manage the first one, is she and I would get together about every other week with a formalized agenda, and we'd talk about work, work product, workflow, very similar to how the city attorney bills when I would get an invoice in, it would be itemized by hour or portion thereof, and that would be an invoice that I would have to approve before it would get, before it would get paid. I don't...
But the way I read it in here is before she starts on a task and incurs cost, that her task has to be approved.
I believe, Councilmember Lusk, if you're talking about Paragraph 3(c) reimbursement for costs, I think that's different than what I would consider her day-to-day professional services. I think that's talking about more of a direct cost that are billed directly back to the city, like travel and various other things. I don't think that's talking about that degree of professional discretion that she has to try and fulfill her scope of work. That's the way I interpret that.
You're talking about out-of-pocket costs as opposed to...
Yes, ma'am.
...costs for services provided.
Yes, ma'am.
Joe?
Bill, what are you doing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I think the re... I had some of the same questions Bill had, and hearing your answers now, Chris, I understand why I had those questions, because this, this isn't really a statement-of-work-driven contract going to solve A, B, and C, D problems. You're scoping a lot of things out. You're trying to determine what needs to get done. It's what I would call a staff augmentation-type engagement. And so, the question that I have is normally when you go the staff augmentation route, you, because, and the reason you do this is because you don't have any defined endpoints. You're not real sure what you're aiming at. You're trying to discover it, that it's, you get some discounts because of that, because we could burn through these hours, not be any closer to the target, and then be looking at, well, we'll hold it to get to the endpoint, we still, we have to keep engaging, keep engaging. And so, that'd be my observation, that, not that I have any problem with, you know, people asking, you know, a particular price for their services, that kind of thing, but for us, I think, I think my question and Bill's question, not to put words in his mouth, was I don't see how we can measure, are we making progress against something?
You know, and I think the progress will be made in the, in the fact that we bring a conservation transaction forward that's actually successful, it goes all the way through recording. I mean, that's the, that's the, that's kind of the goal here. And, you know, yes, I totally agree with you. We have to see some, some action, which is why the response to that was to put some points in place that would at least cause it to be reevaluated and say, have we gone too far? Is now the time that we just haven't accomplished anything? Do we put the brakes on it now? So, excuse me, I don't, I'm willing to take it back, and I'll sit down with Laurel and try to put a more defined a matrix to it if that would get, give the council some comfort.
Well, I'm not necessarily suggesting that, because at, at the end of the day, I don't know that $30,000 equates to, what, 200 hours of overtime? So, I mean, there's only so much you can get done with 200 hours. I mean, that's roughly a month. So, I mean, I don't think we're on the hook for too much. I'd like to see us be able to say, hey, this is what we got for the money that we spent. And I personally would just like to say, well, this is the target that we were aiming at. So, even your definition of having the first transaction, I think that would have been a good thing to include either in the scope of work or in the elements that you called out in the front of the contract. The underlying goal for this is to get to this point, so.
And I can tell you that I've made that desire known, and I brought that up as where I thought we were wanting to go. I understand the position, and I guess this is why it's in front of the council, I understand the position that I think it's some pushback to that, saying, you know, Chris, I could do everything in the world perfectly and still not accomplish that. I think you're going to hear a week from today, you're going to hear that we believe that there are some incentives that the council could agree to that will cause that first conservation transaction to, I hate to use the word fall off the cliff, but we've got people that are like teetering, and somebody just needs to go. And once the first one goes, I think it'll be that others will follow suit. At least that's what Laurel believes in this, but with the dollars that you've appropriated in the capital projects fund, $300,000 in conservation dollars, we believe that there are some incentives that we could, that we could offer, that we could cause maybe the first couple to happen. So, if the council would be more comfortable, you know, approving a contract after a discussion next Monday night to ask some of those specific questions, I could, could do that as well.
Karen?
I think part of what we have hired her for was to tell us how to get where we want to go. So, I think sometimes then it's a little harder to put all the matrix and fit everything into boxes when we know where we want to go, we don't know which of the paths we may want to take in order to get there. I would feel more comfortable if we, if it wasn't the full $30,000 being approved without knowing which direction we're going, if after $15,000, we had an update to make sure that we were all still on the same page as far as, even if a, if a transaction had not been finalized, that we, we knew we were getting closer to him being finalized and working all together. I would just feel more comfortable rather than looking back after $30,000 has been spent and thinking, okay, what have we gotten for our money?
I could certainly support that. I don't have any problem with that type of accountability.
Well, I would, you know, I would almost just suggest whether we start with less and make it full, or start with the same and add a bonus, but obviously, we're dealing with going from an expertise level of what it is that we're trying to do. Now, we're saying, go do it, you know, which is really more of a brokerage role, you know, if there's a sale that goes on there and there's a completion of a task, then we might have some kind of a bonus that goes, or is attached to it of some way, shape, or form. And I think that would offer the incentive, that would allow for recognition of the completion of what it is we want without really the expenditure of additional funds, you know, when we don't get what we were looking for. And that may be something to discuss.
It would be, and I've had discussions with Laurel where I can envision and where I look to the future and say, what does the future like for this position? I would, I would offer to you tonight that she and I have started those conversations, that once we start to get some of these conservation transactions moving forward, and hopefully, it's the desire of the community to do more than one of them, because that seems to be the direction of the council, is that at some point, the fee that is attached to that conservation transaction for this particular person should occur within the transaction itself and not necessarily be a front-loaded funded thing with, with public funds. We're not there yet, because we don't have those dominoes falling, so it almost like we need to front-load it with a push. But then she knows, and we've had lots of conversations, about how we can transfer her off of Milton's payroll and into the conservation transaction itself, which I think is a great place to go. I'm kind of in the mindset, and I don't, maybe this is right, wrong, or indifferent, but I'm almost in the mindset that this is consulting-type services, that if it had existed in Ken's office, we would probably just buy it from Ken, you know, because of the level of expertise. If Ken had a conservation expert lawyer working in his office, you know, this might... So, that's kind of how I'm managing this, is on a, we need to sit down and meet and identify what's acceptable and what's not acceptable, and then when you invoice, I'll, I have to approve the invoice based upon the hours or, or sub-hours thereof, and that's exactly the same way as we manage our legal contract. But I'd, like you, I can envision a, I can envision a future where we can take and transfer this from it being the city's responsibility to it just being one of those, one of those fees incurred with the conservation transaction, as some sort of, some sort of an expert consultant in that process.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
I'll make the motion if...
Okay.
Councilmember Thurmond?
Where's yours? Or you want to add something, Ken?
Well, just to the extent a motion is made, with respect, I don't want to forecast what you're going to do, but with respect to the agreement, I would like you to sound out, to Councilmember Lusk, point the 150 per hour rate, if that is in fact going to be part of the motion to approve the agreement.
Okay, and based on my feelings that after $15,000, we ought to be, get some kind of, how is the best way to do that? Is it better just to approve this at $15,000 with a, with a renewal for another $15,000?
Can I present you with some options?
You sure can.
The first option would be, to the extent this is a signed agreement by Ms. Florio, that could be self, in other words, that's something the city manager could simply just manage and bring to you when that, when that benchmark is met. If we want to embed that in the contract, then I will need to modify the contract and then have Ms. Florio execute it as well. So, that's, that's what we're up against.
But if, if $15,000 is up and, and we don't feel like we're going where we want to go, if it's not...
Because you have a five-day termination for convenience clause, if that $15,000 has been expended and the city manager presents it to you at that threshold, and you say, fine, we want to go ahead and shut it down, you're not going to be, you're not going to be obligated to spend any more.
Okay. And I think that's the way it goes then, rather than...
Yes, ma'am. You can get out of this contract so many different ways. It was built that way.
Okay. I'll make a motion for consideration of a sole-source professional service agreement between the city of Milton, Georgia and Laurel A. Florio for land conservation consulting services, agenda item number 14-301, stating the fact that the contract calls for an hourly rate of $150 per hour, and the fact that after $15,000 of the contract has been expended, the city manager or Laurel will bring back to us an accounting of how the money has previously been spent.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Thurmond. I heard three seconds.
Rick was behind, so it's between me and Matt. I withdraw mine.
All right, I'll, Matt, with a second by Councilmember Pitts. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Rick, does, anybody in the council have anything they want to report?
Other than tomorrow's election day, so exercise your right to vote.
Yep.
If you haven't already.
Already did.
Already did, too.
Chris, I'll turn it over to staff reports.
Yeah, council, just a couple of reports tonight. I mean, very seriously, think of questions you might have in this conservation world. Come prepared with questions next week. Laura and I talked this morning and it said, you know, what format do we want to have with the council in the work session? And I said, I think the best one is one that is interactive and not one that is talking to and then trying to take questions from, but one that can actually have a conversation. So, come with those questions. Also, next week, want to point to the fact that Patrick Perk will be here with us to give us an update from the Board of Education. It's quite a fascinating update, actually, so sometimes when the school comes in, you say, what are they going to talk to us about? It is actually quite fascinating what they're doing in some of their facilities and what they're doing with some of their learning styles, so prep you a little bit for that. I'm happy to, we've had a lot of discussion today, and frankly, I think my voice is about done, but I'm happy to answer any last minute questions on any topics that I might need to report to you on if you have any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Is there any way in preparation for the work session, so that we don't get into just the being presented to, is there any way we could get her presentation or some of the data ahead of time, so we could digest that?
Sure, sure. Bill?
One comment on the Fulton County Board of Education. I noticed that Dr. Avos's contract was extended for another three years.
Good.
We have an advocate down there for us.
He's losing hope.
Indeed. He's a good leader.
As a reminder, I will not be here for that meeting.
Chris, the, just as a follow-up, how did the Conservation Subdivision meeting with Mr. Orenz go the following day after the presentation? I know that she hasn't worked with our staff with regards to different things, and just are we, are we working with it, or are we...
It went very well. I was not able to attend that meeting. I had to free Kathy up from a different meeting, and I attended the other meeting on her behalf, thinking that she was better to be the one with, with Randall than, than I was. But she has described Randall as her new best friend, number one, and they email a lot. Randall has given us a recommendation of a Georgia consultant who could work with us as to, as we put together Conservation Subdivision ordinance, Mr. Broussard. You will see a contract come through for Mr. Broussard. We've asked for a proposal. It's, we've received it, it's very reasonable, and I believe that you'll see it come forward, probably at the next meeting, if she's shaking her head yes, so we'll, we'll move forward. The good news is, is they have a connection, and the guy that we'll use is actually more local, so keeps our, keeps our expertise level high with our fees as low as possible.
And just for, for the conversation we're going to have next week, the Conservation subdivisions are not really part of what Laurel's dealing with. She's dealing with more of the easements and acquisitions and things like that.
That's right. She's quick to remind me that just because it says conservation in it doesn't necessarily mean it fits within her initiative of more of the easement-driven world, that it's more of a planning tool than it is in her world.
Okay. Anybody else?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, just by last wave of the comment, I know we had quite a community outpouring this weekend in, in response to a missing student from Cambridge High School. It was great to see the community come out in support of that effort. I don't have any update for you at this point, and I don't know that I will have an update for you in the next, we'll just have to wait. I mean, things change in these types of circumstances. They change sometimes by the moment, and all of a sudden you get an email and it'll tell you that she's been located, so we'll wait on that. But it was great to see a community, and a community that could figure out how to exchange information with itself. When we looked at our reshares and our retweets and all that stuff that happened today based upon Facebook, and just a couple of releases that went out, it hit within a matter of minutes, seven, eight thousand people, so.
Correct.
It's amazing for the testament of how fast information flows. This one demonstrated how fast information flows.
I just saw that there was a update, that there was a sighting in South, South County, confirmed sighting.
Good, good. Well, then hopefully that means a safe return home, that sometimes it is.
Okay.
Might add that it's not always the correct information that goes at the speed of light.
I saw a lot of, you know, yes, I saw a lot of misinformation.
Right.
And so, yes, you are right. Information flows, it's not always correct.
Be wary.
Okay. If not, we'll adjourn to have a motion.
We'll adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, second. We've got a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous.